Outside the bustling metropolis where teenagers do their best to thrive in a hostile environment, who are you gonna call when you dream too big and the ghosties come to get you? Well, if you're not in the city, you may need to bus in Lucifer Kane and Brutus Fields, paranormal investigators. And if you're very unlucky, they'll find you first. In this episode, it's Kane and Fields versus the Town Council at the Violet Lane Cemetery.
Get your coat.
Excuse me?
Coat, oyster. We'll buy sandwiches at the station.
I have no idea what this is about, obviously. We bust to the station. Kane's filled with this nervous energy. He's not his normal self. Sitting there, tapping on the yellow bars of the Route Master with an impatient rhythmic beat. He's not talking either, nor reading. He's just staring. The whites of his eyes visible as he stares in front of him. We wait, in silence, for the train. We board the train. He stares out of the window on the train. The train. I am nervous about the train. The train. Zones peel away like the skins of an onion: 2, 3, 5, 6, concrete and above, the steeles and blocks of the 60s. Graffiti melts away to rows of houses from the 1940s, the quieter streets of Sunreaders and the morning commute of the office. We rail on. Things stop becoming something east or central or something and start becoming little something or much something or something upon the whatever. I am nervous about the train. The 90s appear. The council house is built for right-to-buy. The offices out of London, the mail readers, heaven, the express readers. Their sons and daughters in lonely bedrooms waiting for the world to meet them. And he keeps tapping, just tapping, and tapping, and tapping.
Next one.
The next station is Foxburn Green.
Where the hell is Foxburn Green?
Here. We're staying in a room above a pub called The King's Oak. Only one restaurant appears on my fast-food app, so we'll have pizza and chips from a Chinese stroke Italian coming to greeters.
Foxburn Green. Should I have bought a change of clothes?
Hmm, probably. You go up to the room, I'll be with you shortly.
And he was. The room was badly furnished with peeling walls and a beige carpet, two single beds five feet apart. Mine looked far too small for me and the sheets were tightened to a fault. I studied my partner when he returned. His coat was creased and his shoes carried a film of light-colored mud. He ate his pizza in silence to BBC Two blaring nonsense. I doubt he slept at all, just curved into a ball on the bed and made a go of it. I don't doubt that if he could, he would have been tapping. And in the silence for the first time since we left the office, a question forms in my mind. Why are we here? Tomorrow was gonna be exciting. Tomorrow was not exciting. Two men in the crumpled suits they had slept in attended the Town Council for the Borough of Pottsfold General Meeting, encompassing itself, Red in the Cross, Loxie, and Foxburn Green. The Town Council offices were also the community theatre, the blood donation location, next to the Violet Lane's children's play park, and could be loaned out for wedding receptions, christenings, birthday parties, and other types of functions. I learned all this because I was reading the bloody notice board, instead of listening to whatever prattle about schools, speeding zones, and speed humps, and provincial parking problems that were being raised. It was taking all I could muster to not beg Kane, "Why are we here? Why are we listening to geriatric members of the town I had never heard of in a borough of a county I am assured in thinking is probably known for its jam? Why am I seeing the bored faces of local politicians and councilmen and their jovial but ultimately soulless NP?" Anyway, the council is the assembly of all elected councillors that meet five times a year. The council, starting with the annual council meeting in May-June. The council, each meeting of the council is chaired by the mayor and all the meetings are open to the public. The public, like me, and my partner here, who I'm really starting to hate now. I have just learned that the Audit and Standards Committee has a range of responsibilities, primarily relating to the monitoring of internal council functions, member standards and ethics, internal audits, the council's regulatory framework, risk management policies, approval of treasury management, and that the chair is a grey man named Howard. And that I want to die. Kane is silent. He is still staring. He holds the agenda in his hands, crinkling the edges. I don't think he's even looked at it, however.
Now, we move on to the proposed transfer of power to the Foxburn Field Panel from the Cabinet. The MP has requested that Mr Kirkwell, Ms Carter, and I advise the Cabinet on the development and impl- On the development and implementation of the Foxburn Field Plan, a document which seeks to formulate the council's approach to delivering projects in the field area. We find that with a small reconstitution and condensing of the current land to a smaller plot, development can begin on not only the government's proposed high-speed route, but also, Mr Kirkwell believes, that valuable brown land will be made available for housing. We propose that the Planning Commission- We propose that the Planning Commission approves this to allow time-
Objection!
Pardon?
Uh, objection? To that course of... um, excuse me.
The way to object to the council about a planning application is to- Is to write to the Planning Department, either by post or by email, possibly using the comments facility on the council's website. You should quote the planning application number shown on the council's letter to you or on the council's website. And then send the letter to the address- And then send the letter to the address shown in that letter, or on the website.
I did that. Ms Carter responded that I should attend this meeting.
I'm sorry, it didn't pass my desk.
Mr Kane, is it?
Ah, yes. Sorry, Jeff, I was warned about this.
Mr Kane is a conservationist.
Is he, by God?
Who raised some objections to the Foxburn Fields redevelopment due to snakes, was it?
Uh, slow worms, actually. Limbless lizards, not a snake. Wildlife and Countryside Act 1981, it is illegal to intentionally kill, injure, sell, or advertise to sell them.
We investigated the site and found no evidence of slow worms, Mr Kane.
Bizarre.
Mr Kane, you also appealed to the site in October of last year under the clause of being relating to the effect of the development on the character and appearance of the conservation area, or on the setting of the particular listed building citing the railway-armed pub, just two and a half miles away.
Lucy, what are you doing?
You also appealed to Parliament to have it officially designated as an area of outstanding natural beauty.
I did.
It's a- It's a graveyard, Mr Kane.
I am glad you attended, Mr Kane, as we were worried our correspondence wasn't reaching you. You never replied to my emails.
Kane had ground this meeting to a halt. The assembled old folk are staring at him. I look at him too, and in his crumpled suit and flyaway hair, he looks crazed.
I'm sorry.
I admit, I am not a constituent.
Yes.
But, I truly believe that this is the wrong course of action. Also, on an unrelated note, did you know that the Secretary of State may be persuaded to call in the application for his own determination under section 77 of the Town and Country Planning Act 1990?
So what are you proposing?
Excuse me? What do you mean? What-
The MP held up his hand for silence. His fist was clenched. Kane was grinning like the mad bastard he was.
All that I ask for is that the lauded Planning Department accompany me to the site tomorrow.
That's far too little time for a proper consultation!
Nonsense! We can do it with Ms Carter and you, Mr Grace. I take it that the Honourable Gentleman won't feel the need to accompany us.
Indeed. Anyway, we'll discuss this.
Okay, if we can continue.
Well, Kane sat down. I pulled up my coat. Kane crossed his arms and he smiled. Holy God, we weren't leaving. Did you know, did you know that teenagers have been menacing the primary school sector? And that Mrs Jenkins' wall-eating has grown out too far? And that the new litter campaign will be rolled out over the summer across Pottsfold? Because now I do! Holy Moses, the only thing that had to entertain me was the curiosity why the MP suddenly started whistling Lucy's tune. God damn it. We left. It was dark and brown leaves stuck to our boots. The council very pointedly ignored my maliciously grinning compatriot. The MP scowled at me from over his iPhone as he got into the black Mercedes. I hadn't done anything, I thought. Kane lit up one of his bizarre cigarettes, bat wings of blue smoke wisping around his face. God damn it. He suddenly split off to the left grumbling about something. And he was gone. Into the night, probably back with the dead. I went to the Chinese. Thirty-four, sixty-three, and C V, forget it. The food was painfully cold when he traipsed in. My confusion had begun turning slowly to anger with this day, with him. I pretended to sleep as he sat on the end of the bed. I began not to care why we were here. He smoked a cigarette at 3:00 in the morning, leaning out of a window, and then he slept. And then it was the next morning.
Okay, my man, this is the site.
This is the site. It's just a graveyard. I mean, it's just not new, not old, 1920s and 30s untended graves. This is terrible! I'm gonna hear him out, though, because this did not seem promising.
Plan?
See if the Minister knows the difference between a grass snake and a slow worm.
Is... is there a big difference?
No, not really.
A car pulled up, then another, and then another. About one person of importance got out of each car with two or three hangers-on behind them. I hate to sound like some vile tabloid, but Christ, that's your tax money at work here, folks. Okay, so how did this happen?
Well, originally it was a potter's field, as far as I can tell. The rectory is a mile up that way, but it travels the normal funeral routes downhill and crooked paths against the-
Lucy, how did you get this goddamn flatilla of sedans to turn up?
Convoy, surely.
Kane?
Fields.
What did you say?
You were at the meeting.
And I learned nothing!
Fine. It was simple. About six years ago, this bloody party had a leadership battle so disgusting that the bleeding tabloids called it a smear campaign on both sides.
Wow, we both hate newspapers.
The then PM was dealing with a vote of no confidence from the backbenchers, despite unfathomably positive public opinion. Don't ask me why he had that, I didn't vote for our bloody public services to be dashed against.
Lucy.
Okay, long story short, French, who at the time was in... education? Or war? Or health? Anyway, not the bloody MP for Foxburn. He took the fall for the PM, and bloody hard, too. He both defended the policies at the centre in his party, which that were wanted, gone, and publicly stamed the far-right every chance he got. He was a bloody tornado of nonsense and glad-handing at a time where a leadership race seemed approaching.
Right. So...
So, his name got bandied about with the head opposition as a potential PM replacement. I think in the room where it happens, as it were, he was also promised a chancellorship? Or maybe foreign, with Chancellor on the horizon? He was still on the PM's good side, he represented the status quo in a party all about the status quo. His opponent was the current Secretary of State, Michael Perry. By the end, French and the Prime Minister seemed to be a one-party, two-headed campaign against their own party. Whatever, it failed.
Sorry, we had a vote of no confi-
No, it wasn't the vote. Basically, the centre-right darling and the PM stabbed French right in his Ides of March. French was again becoming too popular amongst his own party. Hard drives were searched, taxes were reviewed, phones tapped, and things were found, as always. He was demoted so quickly, his name only appears in newspapers when someone writes in to correct an article that called him retired. Now, Perry is the state, and the PM is the PM, and the right Honourable Basil French is the elected representative of Foxburn Green.
Bloody fool!
It's very boring without what we do, isn't it?
Oh, yes. I honestly don't know how anyone with second sight gets out of the bed each morning, honestly. But anything I bring over the Secretary of State's desk makes French quake with fear.
So why didn't you just give it to him in the first place?
Perry?
No, Christ no! It'd get blown out of proportion by a few quick piles of fifties to the papers from anonymous sources. What would then happen is the whips, under orders from Perry and probably the PM, would force French to resign from his tiny little post. What would then happen is that three months later, the building plan would go ahead anyway. I think there's a blog of all the times that's happened. Anyway, let's go for it.
It's all very interesting in a front-is-out kind of way. So who's here then?
No one of normal note.
No practitioners, then?
Statistically, probably one or two.
Right, okay, so what's buried here?
What is?
I said what's buried here, like books, reliquies, I don't know, swords, treasure, a ley line that runs through it?
Nothing like that.
Oh, oh no! Are they the things? Like the boy or the apartment thing?
Brutus, for the love of God, stop bloody asking me! Normal people, normal corpses, normal, normal, bloody normal! Just be quiet with all your questions, you overgrown child!
So, Mr Kane, care to show me the slow worms that we couldn't find?
Mr Grace, I would-
Oh, do shut up, Jeff! Go do the perimeter... thing with the techie lad!
Chill.
Jeff! God, man!
Fine, then.
Right. Now you. We all know you're not a bloody twitcher conservationist, so I had assumed you were just a property developer trying to snipe this land before we could sell it. But according to your census, you're some sort of hack freelancer, some kind of palm-taro psychic ghost hunter, right?
Not exactly, I'm more-
Whatever it is, it probably defrauds little old ladies who miss their husbands. So, you're not in property yet, but you're fighting for this. I don't believe the crazy man act either.
I am not in property at all! I've made no moves to buy the land, have I?
Give me a minute! I could strangle that man! So, fine. Why? Do you have relatives here? Did you... who did you think you are yourself?
It's "do", and furthermore, it's called genealogy.
Ha, bloody ha! Listen, I've read your emails, and a town councilwoman knows when someone is avoiding a question.
Oh, check it yourself, madam councilwoman! There's no one here related to bloody anyone! I can't believe that someone of your stripe only sees greed, crime, and nepotism as the motivations for doing anything in life. Oh, what am I saying? Of course I can believe it!
Let's go and see your bloody limbless lizards!
Ah, wha- wha- where's the conservationist team?
I thought you were supposed to be there.
Did you bring geophysical imaging? Is this bloody time team? I don't think the worms have built baths, a few villas, a goddamn temple to a schleppious worm, so we can save them from the bloody Iscarii!
Mr Kane!
Ms Carter! I know what lip service is, and I know what you're trying to do here, and I-
She's over there, you bloody fool! It's going to cost £850 for the next hour and a half of work expedited for you, you rude, horrid, grubby little man!
Carter storms off. Lucifer storms off. I... stand here. I drink a free cup of stewed tea in a polystyrene cup. Eventually, things are packed into the fleets of cars and vans. The graveyard seems peaceful. I lie. The graveyard has an angry man in it, with the kind of anger that ruins a party, the kind of anger that makes a car ride unbearable. That little, non-magical aura that every human has access to. I really don't wanna talk to him. Honestly, I don't even get him. It's not like he cares. I go back to the room. I put on BBC Two and I watch a pretty short lady with a lisp talk to me about Georgian clothes. I didn't make the conscious decision to get some sleep.
Heaven's bloody teeth!
Ah! What?
Tomorrow, they're telling me tomorrow. They know, they know that there are no bloody slow worms!
I don't even know what a slow worm is!
Neither do they! It was just likely. I just... oh, shut up!
Don't bloody tell me to shut up!
Don't bloody tell me what to do when you're not doing anything yourself!
Dude, you haven't given me anything to do! I don't even know-
No! You bloody well don't, do you?
You dragged me out here! You got our operation noticed by the goddamn government, literally a Cabinet Minister! You look insane! I look insane? Or at least, I'm like a bloody enabler to an insane person!
Brutus.
You've just dragged me and coerced me and been a rude, evil little prick as you normally are, and I don't even know what is here to care about! You can't treat the people you like, people you pretend to like, people that you... you use, like me.
Please.
He's crying.
One more time.
One more time what? He's off again, out of the B and B, past the Chinese, down the dark lane, left at the "for sale" sign into the cemetery. I follow because... hell, I always follow. I'm so angry my very footsteps produce a percussion of judgment on his shallow footfalls. I lean over him as he shuffles in his pockets.
I hate that it's come to this, but I am going to pray.
He produces a cigarette from a metallic case with a picture of a pale girl on it. It is about three inches long, wrapped in a hard shell of white paper, veins running through it, crystalline. He lights it, and it smells like cinnamon, like hard work in autumn nights, like hot tarmac freshly cooled by the rain. It is ubiquitous to the man's aura. He then, for the very first time since I've known him, takes a long puff, inhales without exhaling, and hands it to me. I shake my head and hold my hand, but there is a pleading, wordless pleading in his suck and eyes. I smoke, short and shallow, not coughing, but certainly a hiccup on intake, and a raw feeling of my throat being ripped by alien air. He exhales, almost nothing, absorbed. He turns to the fence. Okay. So... I'm going home. I hope to see you there soon. But not too soon, Lucy.
Just come with me again.
I look towards the fence. God damn it. He opens a tiny gate with an opening times and an alcohol control warning pinned to it. Don't think we'll find any tonight. I didn't bring a torch, and my phone battery is almost...
Oh my God. Brutus, you get a little moment. You get a while. You get to see what I tried to see. I admit, normally, it's horrid. Things eating things, things slaving things, but here... but here...
It's a market? It's a tenement building? It's... oh my, it's-
I don't know why. I don't know if this is happenstance, but Foxburn's Violet Lane Cemetery is a city of the dead, a place of the dying.
This is insane. It's so warm and so bright.
Three spirits list towards us. A woman in three ages, a woman living. Once again, a kindly man in a tricorn smiles at Brutus, who smiles back dumbfounded. A boy in khakis smiles at another old man, both ignore us thoroughly.
Tommy, I think. An older boy says hello, their voices distant on the wind, not there. It's hard to tell. Either way, I know they're friends, or were they friends? Or they were friends? No, they're still friends, it's so hard to describe. But they're talking about fruit. The young man has never heard of a mango, and then they have a mango. They always had mango. Mango appeared? This is-
Brutus?
Yeah, this is making me cry.
I don't understand it.
Me neither.
No, I mean, this is just theirs. There's no reason they're here. They built this themselves as an alternative for not being able to go anywhere else just yet. It's not a terminus, it's a... but a long-stay train station?
I understand, I feel that.
I know you do. So, you understand that if they destroy it-
I do understand it.
We feed them to over there.
A morning broke. A morning cracks, runny and grey to be sent back. Hard to play. Oh, even I don't get that one. We wait at the same awful-looking council offices, with its plastic-sheeted windows and 90s wall posters. I'm so tired. Lucy's told me that we're not going in for a meeting 'cause he doesn't want to. And I've forgiven him, for now. But he's still an idiot. Carter and Grace emerge from the foul depths of hell.
Ah, no, Mr French?
He's in Parliament.
Ah, shame.
You are insufferable! Well, Mr Kane, Mr Fields? Gentlemen, there are no slow worms in Violet Lane Cemetery, also known as the Foxburn Fields. There are, however, great crested newts, a dedicated European-protected species.
Haha, as I have said many times before, thank you, European lords!
Funny. Anyway, well done. I'm sure all the plasterers, builders and electricians worrying about Christmas will be happy a huge council back to state has collapsed!
I'm sure I don't care. Ms Carter, have I ever told you your eyes sparkle in the sunlight?
She thrusts a twenty-three to twenty-five page document into my hands and walks off. I hope to never see her again.
Well, I can't believe that prayer worked. I, I'm sorry, what am I signing?
We sign things, we agree to results, we cover people we've never met in departments that we've never seen. I talked to a little mousy thing from the environmental agency.
Mr Kane?
Mr Grace?
I'm glad that we could come to a mutual agreement.
I would say this was less of a compromise and more of a victory for the great crested newts and the conservationist movement in general.
Ha, yes, newts, Mr Kane. I'm sure my employees and the MP will be happy in time.
As a council representative, I'm glad you can come round to my way of thinking. Now, if you'd excuse me-
I represent a lot more than that, Mr Kane, and of a more common interests than you know. And let us say that you can be moved to act just like anyone else. Perhaps more than anyone else, just because you see doesn't mean you should grow too confident.
I'm sorry, what did you just say? To me?
You're all right.
Did you, did you see, di- di- did Jeff Grace-
Why, do you wanna gloat?
No, no, but I-
Good thing here, Louis.
Indeed.
Christ, Brutus. What do you call a puppet that can see the strings?
Dunno.
A puppet.
You've been listening to Kane and Fields, Paranormal Investigators, starring Jack Fitzpatrick as Kane, Oliver Morris as Fields, Dave Pickering as Jeff Grace, Ally Campbell as Ms Carter and Mark Waylett as the right Honourable MP Basil French. Kane and Fields was written by Jack Fitzpatrick and Oliver Morris and was directed by Jude Hodgson-Hann, with sound design by Jude Hodgson-Hann and Oliver Morris, produced by Skardee Sibley. Join us next time in a tale of doors, stories and grotesque apparitions in our next episode, Protected by Guardians.